Trustee Lyon, Trustee Selleb.
Here.
Trustee Wood.
Here.
Trustee Mahoney. Trustee Anderson.
Here.
Trustee Coonty.
Here.
President Miller.
Here. Just for the record, Trustee Lyon is not going to be able to attend because he got out of town and Trustee Mahoney is running into traffic and will be late. But we will proceed as we have the forum. First thing on the agenda is the pledge of allegiance. So if you would like to join in.
The flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First item on here is his public comment on agenda items only. I know there's a number of you that would like to speak. We'd like to hear all of you that would. I ask that you keep the comments less than a minute or less. I'm also asking that you fill in a sign-in sheet if you'd like to talk to the board. That helps us clarify for the minutes that we have to read. So if you have an opportunity, please fill one of those out. If you don't, if you haven't filled one out, we will still let you speak. I'm just asking that you fill one out later in the term. Okay? All right. So do we have people that have signed up?
Yes. So with Bear Wolf from Emmanuel Lutheran?
Good evening. I'm Philip Bear Wolf of the six thirteen Howard Court here in East Dundee. Privilege to serve as Associate Pastor of Emmanuel Lutheran School as well. I need to spend some of the best parts of my week with seventh graders. I've learned quite a bit from them. If you're listening to twelve and thirteen year olds, you might have learned a lot as well. We were talking a few weeks ago about the reason why I had to cancel class on a Wednesday night. It was two weeks ago because I was planning to speak with the Planning and Zoning Board about their recommendation for dispensing and selling marijuana here in East Dundee. It was a great lesson in Christian civvies, letting our voice be heard, not being afraid to stand up for what is right, to be bold and trusting that the Lord will provide. As I was telling them about the meeting, I let the students know that our church would be requesting that no dispensary or store be located within fifteen hundred feet of our church or school campus. I had a picture in our mind what that circle would look like, how far it would reach. To a student, they all agreed, while wondering why in the world are village leaders would even consider such a thing? Why would you invite that kind of presence into our downtown? Why would encourage drug activity that close to where so many things happen? Why would want that to happen here? Frankly, I was a little bit surprised by the lauded as well, by their heated reaction. They did not think this was acceptable. None of them were in favor of it. Maybe, just maybe, we can learn something from seventh graders. Please don't allow production, marketing, selling of marijuana within fifteen hundred feet of our church and school campus. For nearly a hundred and sixty years, our churches provided quality, Christ-centered religious education in the heart of East Dundee. We love drawing more people closer to Christ than Emmanuel, and we'll continue to do that in the years to come. We'll be greatly helped in doing that through this board's decision, agreeing with the Planning and zoning commission's recommendation. Thank you for your time.
Did you have an order that you wanted to go through of the people that are speaking?
Um, sure.
We're comfortable with that list as well. Whatever you wish.
Sue Domier of Emmanuel Lutheran Church and School.
Good evening. My name is Sue Domier. I'm blessed and privileged to serve as the Principal of Emmanuel School, and I'd like to take a couple minutes of your time. And so it's my privilege to address you this evening on behalf of the children and the families, not only of Emmanuel, but on behalf of all the children of our village. Many of you attended the Planning and Zoning Meeting, so you know our request here. I'd like to take a moment and speak about the placement of a retail cannabis facility in our community, especially within fifteen hundred feet of Emmanuel. You see, the addition of an establishment expressly for the sale of consumption and possible consumption of cannabis affects not only Emmanuel's children, but all of the children of our community. It affects children outside the ranges of the ages of our preschool and elementary school, as well as our own students. The touch is broad and wide. A fence or property line will not stop it, but a location well away from places where families gather and where children roll will protect all children, including the children of Emmanuel. My first concern is for the children, for our students of Emmanuel School. And the example a retail store sets for these impressionable youngsters, we know full well that the children are great watchers. They watch our behaviors and actions constantly. They see what we do so much more easily than they listen to the words we speak. Schools have long taught the dangers and pitfalls of alcohol and drugs. Their programs, supported by the community, have long helped schools teach the dangers associated with drug use and abuse. Our children have been taught well. Through education, they have learned to speak up for themselves, combat peer pressure, and use words that help them avoid the use of drugs and alcohol. Since those programs are no longer provided by communities, schools are left to teach these truths, and we do exactly that within the walls of Emmanuel. Not to shield or hide our children from the world, but to help them live a God-pleasing life in the world. The example set by adding a retail store for cannabis access sends a strong message to children, regardless of the lessons taught in schools. That example tells children that it's really okay to disregard the lessons taught by the community and schools. It tells them with a wink and a nod that it's okay to indulge and experience the high of cannabis after being taught that it's a dangerous activity. What do we tell our children? How do we answer those questions? My guests, there are not many, if any, parents here this evening who will openly tell their child that cannabis use is good and proper. Less than ninety days ago, the law of the land agreed with many parents, "It isn't a good thing." Now the laws change, and the use of cannabis for recreation is legal. That does not mean we welcome it into the heart of our community. It does mean that we are careful about a store's placement and the message we send to our children. Our village is a wonderful place to raise a family. The parades and festivals we enjoy attest that our village is family-friendly, safe, and welcoming. I cannot imagine what Dickens or Heritage Fest or any other festival would look like in a retail cannabis store were to open in the heart of our community. Finally, I want to express our concern over the safety aspect of providing a retail cannabis facility into this community. Not only does Emmanuel lie so close to the proximity of our downtown, but our children are outside every day. They travel the downtown area daily. A trip to Dairy Queen or Vans is almost a daily occurrence. We are out and about. We know that within the first eighteen days of January, two armed robberies were committed against cannabis shops. Those seem to have died down largely due to the current lack of product available. The fact remains that armed guards will be active in a facility that is a cash and carry business only. There's no way around that. Our children are much too precious to take that chance. Placing a retail store for cannabis sales in the heart of our community so close to a vibrant and active school makes no good sense. It endangers our community, unteaches the lessons of drug resistance, and brings an unknown danger into our midst. Just because the law says it's okay does not make it right. It's up to us to make good, caring, and proper decisions in order to care for our community, especially those most vulnerable, our children. Thank you for your time this evening. No amount of tax revenue or income is worth the risk endangering our children. Please do not put a retail cannabis store within fifteen hundred feet of our church and school. It's just not worth that risk. Thank you.
Tobin Schrader, Carperzville resident.
My name is Tobin Schrader. I live in Carperzville. Thank you for giving me the chance to speak tonight. My wife and I moved to Dundee area just under ten years ago, and we did it a little bit manually because I grew up in Minnesota. We spent the early part of our marriage in Minnesota, where you can choose where your children go to school. You don't have to be bound by where you live, because it's a school or district. We didn't realize that when we moved here. We didn't know Carperzville or Dundee from Shondler, from Palatine, Crystal Lake. And we were fortunate and blessed to have a place like Emmanuel because of our kids. I can't say for sure that we would still live in Dundee if we didn't have Emmanuel at school. If you're at the plant, fighting and zoning commission meeting a few weeks ago, you ever passed your younger, Emmanuel Lutheran church, expressed concern about the attendance and the future of the school if the facility dispensed marijuana was close to the school and church. I'm concerned as a parent on that as well. I'm not sure, like I said, I can't say we would be here any longer if we didn't have the choice of Emmanuel. So what happens when a family, they start losing other families from the community? This is Domier mentioned, Vans and Dairy Queen and those kinds of visits. You can bet that as good as the food is at Aliano's and Blue Roots, we wouldn't choose it for our day nights. If we lived elsewhere, our business would be elsewhere. Downtown would be at a risk. And as much as the risk might be slight, we don't want all of the risks. The risks might be slight, they might be minor, we don't know. But we make decisions based on a risk versus reward. All I've heard is risk. I haven't heard any reward in having a dispensary downtown versus elsewhere. Risk versus reward. I think that the community, that the church, the school, that's the entire area deserves better for taking a risk without reward. Thank you.
My friend, Emmanuel Lutheran Church.
Tom Roser of Ottawa. Competition is not only from Emmanuel. I'm a major investment shareholder in the downtown school area, and together we have created something very unique now. They call People's Square, others love to call it a district, but it is unique in the area. And the investments that we make and the kind of businesses that we work on in that area should be supported. And I do not think that this kind of business is the kind of business that you would want to have. I also caution that many of the future investors would look at this kind of investment, not this kind of business. I'm not in favor of getting marijuana dispensary. Not at all. I've got the floor of the technical area along with Emmanuel. But if you feel that that is important, it's not a mine, but we have to put that on the house for two or three years. But we'll see.
Randy Johnson, East Dundee resident.
I'm not only a Dundee resident since nineteen eighty-three, most of the children of the board elders in Emmanuel Lutheran Church. I don't second everything that everyone has said. Unfortunately, enough people in the state didn't have their voices loud enough before the Illinois legislature decided legalize this. Arguments whether or not it's by even valid federal law, but it is what it is. But we're here to tell you that we don't think a lot to be around the church. And we ask the board to go along with the zoning commission's recommendations. It's going to be anywhere. And we want to reduce the risk. It's turned out on multiple try, and I understand the revenue issues, but we don't. We got not just three mud puddles at your cat's house. I'm sorry. We also have a job. So thank you for your time. We ask that you follow the recommendations of the zoning.
Reverend William Donker, Emmanuel Lutheran Church.
Good evening. My name is Billy Donker. I'm Senior Pastor of Emmanuel Lutheran Church. My apologies, coming late. Good to be with you all though. There's been an argument for having both medicinal and recreational marijuana in well-traveled areas, and it's an argument that actually comes from the Bible, Genesis one twenty-nine. And it talks in there about how God has given every seed-bearing plant. Therefore, we should be able to, God obviously wants us to enjoy that, so why wouldn't we have it downtown? Folks, I gotta tell you, that argument, at best, is ignorant, and at worst, is manipulative bullying. First of all, God did give every seed-bearing plant for us to ingest or eat. If you know your history or remember that hemlock, a seed-bearing plant, was used by Socrates to kill himself. Wouldn't want to get any part of poison sumac or poison ivy around my body, let alone in my body. And so I've heard this argument that, well, we should be able to enjoy that because that's why God gave. Folks, I gotta tell you, medicinal marijuana is a gift of God. There's no question about it. I am absolutely convinced that that is a gift of God, and I will not decry the pain-telling benefits of medicinal marijuana. But recreational marijuana causes inebriation or intoxication. And when you read the Bible, nowhere in the Bible is that ever permitted. In fact, it's called sin. Now, I understand that we have all kinds of taverns downtown, East Dundee, West Dundee in our area. But folks, common sense. We know that smoking a joint gets one high, inebriated and intoxicated. Having a cocktail doesn't necessarily do it. Does it? Do I think that there are people that leave our taverns over-served or over-invited? Of course. But that's not the rule. And in fact, we have laws against that. At this stage of the game, and see, you probably can speak to this much better than I can, I don't even know if they can determine if someone is sufficiently high enough that they shouldn't be driving. So I think there's a lot of unanswered clues yet regarding safety, regarding propriety. But this whole nonsense that it's in the Bible, therefore we ought to have to, or ought to get to use it. Folks, as I said, I understand this, at best is ignorant, at worst is manipulative bullying. It's not true. Thank you.
Is that all the signatures that we have? Anybody else want to process?
Sure.
I've been standing here in the central lab. I'm East Dundee resident. I've lived here for ten years. I've been standing here listening to these people, one after another, talk about how we seem to be fighting against putting it in our village. Well, I don't think that's really the point here. Historically, our village has always offered people a place where they can go and behave the way they want to, regardless of the morals of the next town. We were the first place that was wet when every place else was dry, and that's why you have so many bars in East Dundee. All of your children have been associating with those alcohol-emitting bars for all these times, and they seem to be able to cope quite well with it. They know right from wrong. I'm not sure that we've really established that marijuana use is right or wrong. It seems to me that the decision of where to place a dispensary, first of all, I think the decision to have a dispensary addresses a need for fiscal revenue. We have a society that's really bent on saying all taxes are bad. No, taxes are necessary. Taxes are my way of paying for civilization, and so I like paying taxes. But there's a lot of people who don't, and they don't want to pay for all the things the taxes paid for. So we kind of have to get creative to fight against that. And here we have an opportunity to have some fiscal input that will be beneficial to our village. The city of, the state of Illinois made ten million dollars in January. I'm pretty sure that a lot of people made a lot of that, other than just the state. So I think the decision should be a matter of practicality. We know they draw traffic. We know they draw parking needs. We know that down the line, we're going to want our dispensary to be visibly there so that people can drive down the street and say, "Oh, that's where it is. Let me go spend my money there," so that East Dundee can get some of my taxes. So it seems to me that, yes, you're right, the village is not the right place for the downtown, because there's not a place where there's a lot of parking. There's not a place where we want a lot of people standing around at the place. So I'll agree that the downtown is not necessarily the right place for it, but I don't think that it's a source of evil. And I think that if you go around being fearful, that is not an appropriate way to go through life. You have to go through life open and listening to the things that are around you and seeing where we have successes and where we have failures. Sure, some people react badly to marijuana. They also react very badly to alcohol. But we don't see that as a reason to ban bars or to push them out of downtown. So my feeling is that Route seventy-two and twenty-five has a beautiful location that we've been trying to fill for a long time, and the party, I think that that strip mall right there would be a really good place for it. Maybe over further east, but it's a little harder to find. So I just want us to stop being, operating from a point of fear and start operating from a point of what's practical. Thank you.
Okay. Anybody else?
I'm Chris Wood. I grew up in three of Dewey's first streets in Dundee. I've lived there, lived there on the east side. I'm now a resident of Carperzville, but I worked in Emmanuel Lutheran Church. I'm a business guy. And I think a little different perspective on this. It seems to be that the village has been a vandal shop last seven to ten years, taking the downtown and turning it into something that's quite exciting. I lived with my wife when I grew up there. I think that there are so many things that have brought up that are negatives to putting a business such as that downtown. And I've heard one positive that comes from it. And I think that even if we're taking a look at traffic counts, the traffic counts on twenty-five and seventy-two have got to be far greater than it is on our street. So it would seem to me it would be easier for people to get there to purchase the product, bring more revenue to the village. I think the Planning and Zoning Committee kind of heard that and saw that and said, "You know, let's create a district, an overlay district there. We can put that there, so we're going to, A, still be able to sell and create the revenue, and B, keep it away from our other businesses that are doing well and we can continue to attract businesses down there that aren't like businesses, bars, restaurants, and things of that nature." So, you know, I've heard so many bad things, safety issues, parking issues, bringing people downtown that purchase those things. Parking's a problem. There's five bad things and not one good one. And it just seems to me, with all that bad, to push some form of agenda that basically no one in this room that I've heard so far has said, "This is a good place to go." So, I thank you so much for listening to us. I've been brought letters to you. It's been a pleasure to work with the village staff, Jennifer, and the rest of you. Let's keep you in good danger. Thanks, Mark, for your help.
Anybody else?
One more. Kevin Slowdie, I own Vapor House and CBD. I've got Sunrise Health and Wellness in East Dundee. I hear a lot of people talking about cannabis, and I want to be sure everybody understands there's cannabis and there's cannabis. Cannabis sativa, well cannabis indica is what a lot of people are talking about, that has the intoxicant, tetrahydrocannabinol, THC. But there's another plant called sativa, cannabis sativa, that has no THC, it's not intoxicating. You've probably heard the information about CBD, cannabidiol, which is a very effective pain relief, pain and anxiety relief product, and it's good for a number of different issues. But it has no effect like THC, the psychoactive. In fact, cannabidiol, CBD, actually reverses the effect of THC. So when you're doing these laws or discussions, it should be about marijuana, not about hemlock flower or CBD. If you write the law as cannabis, that's inclusive for indica and sativa. Need to remove sativa from it, because that's got no THC, no intoxication. I just want to clear up the definition, that there are two different products here. Thank you.
Cliff Surges, property owner, two ten North River Street. Joined Emmanuel Lutheran in nineteen ninety, raised my children there. Just very briefly, I would rather err on the side of caution. We could always loosen this up later on, but to be loose and try and tighten it up, I've not seen that work. So I'm in favor of the overlay district. I'm in favor of protecting our churches and schools, whether that's the other side of town with St. Mary's, whether that's Emmanuel Lutheran, whether that's Harperdville Lutheran School. I'm just encouraging that we be a little bit conservative on this, that we take and get our arms around this, and if in a couple of years we need to make some adjustments, we can always commit. That's all I have. Thank you.
Any more?
I'll be real quick and brief for a lot of different arguments tonight here.
Get yourself.
I'm Tim Delap. I've lived in East Dundee for thirty-five years or so. Great town. We have a little concept in this country that I think is generally agreed upon. It's called separation of church and state. And I resent the church telling me what I can and cannot buy or sell or do in my town. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
I'm also a citizen. My name is Larry Freeman, and this gentleman just says separation of church and state. We're not separating from church and state. I'm a member of the state. You're a member of the state. You probably go to church, I don't know. There is no separation of church and state. Separation of church and state is that the state cannot name a religion. Everyone has a choice. Everybody has a choice for cannabis. But there also has to be some common sense. And if you don't have common sense and use it wisely, we might as well throw it on the towel and everybody make their own cannabis and smoke it at home and give it to the kids, right? I'm all for that then.
Where else?
My name is Dave Swanson. Been a resident of East Dundee for about fifty years. I've served on the Planning and Zoning Committee for twenty-two years. I have been through many hearings. I've had a little bit of a fight with somebody for how much I'm here. Sort of live by a few years. And I know that we have in the past taken things that people wanted to put in this village and separated it from a specific area. And I think that would be the best recommended motion to follow through on this type of operation. Okay? Appreciate your input.
What else? Four marks. Go. We have two items on the consent agenda. We have a motion to approve the regular village board meeting minutes made of February third, twenty twenty, as well as a motion to approve a resolution approving a request for permit to close State of Illinois Highway, State Route seventy-two from the Illinois Highway. And I know that we have in the past taken things that people wanted to put in this village and separated it from a specific area. And I think that would be the best recommended motion to follow through on this type of operation. Okay?
What else? We have two items on the consent agenda. We have a trusty motion for the consent agenda.
Motion to approve the regular village board meeting minutes made of February 3, 2020, as well as a motion to approve a resolution approving a request for permit to close State of Illinois Highway State Route 72 from the Illinois Department of Transportation in connection with the annual memorial day parade 2020.
Senator. This question. Governor.
Trusty Salin?
Yes.
Trusty Wood?
Yes.
Trusty Andreessen?
Yes.
Trusty Cooney?
Yes.
All right, we have no old business to see a name, so we'll move right on to new business. First item on here, if we can have a motion on this, please.
I'll make a motion to approve an ordinance permitting various sections of the chapter 157 of Village East Dundee Village Code relating to adult use and medical cannabis business and services.
Senator.
Second. Well, within your packet, there's a memorandum explaining this agenda item. We've heard some public comments. The beginning of the memorandum goes through the background and what we've accomplished so far. Joe, just to summarize for the board and for the benefit of the audience, the village board met on September 16, 2019, where they approved the creation of a cannabis tax that would, in essence, allow the both dispensary use and cultivation center manufacturing type uses within the village. So at that point, the board had to meet and decide where it would be located with this village. The board met on December 9, 2019. They made a recommendation to the Planning and Zoning Commission, and that recommendation came before the Planning and Zoning Commission on February 5. The board's initial recommendation and the Planning and zoning's recommendation are different. What the board has in front of them tonight is two separate ordinances, which would determine the location of both types of uses within the village. So to summarize these ordinances, first I'll start with the recommendation by the village board to the Planning and Zoning Commission. And that was for the manufacturing type uses, which include cultivation centers, grass growers, infusers, processors, and transportation organizations, limiting those to the zoning districts, which are the M1 and M2 manufacturing districts throughout the village. There would be no overlay district. The board did recommend a 25-foot requirement from existing school, daycare, residential districts, and churches. Under the state law, this 25-foot requirement exists for medical cannabis, but not for recreational use cannabis. 2,500 foot. Thank you, 2,500. So that is an additional requirement on top of the state statute for the recreational use. That requirement does not exist under the state law. So I just want to be clear that that's something that the board was looking to. Under the state law, there is a distance requirement between cannabis uses of 1,500 feet. So that would exist. The board also recommended that all these uses would be granted through a special use permit process. And that there would be certain conditions on that special use that would be included within the village code that regulate the supply, the disposal, the ventilation, and the security requirements. So that recommendation included the first draft ordinance. In addition, there was regulations specific to dispensaries. And those regulations included expanding the zoning districts in which dispensaries would be allowed to include the V1, V2, and V3 zoning districts in addition to the M1 and M2 zoning districts. Again, there would be no overlay district. And the only distance requirement that was included within the ordinance is per the state act of 1,500 requirement between uses. Again, this would be regulated by a special use permit. The other item that has been included within the board ordinance is a parking requirement. This parking discussion did not happen at the board level. What happened is there was a recommendation that was made to the Planning and Zoning Commission regarding parking, because after January 1, it became apparent that parking was going to be problematic as it relates to dispensaries. So the Planning and Zoning Commission was given a recommendation of 10 spaces minimum, with one space for every 150 square feet of closed floor area, which is the most stringent requirement we have within our village code regarding parking. In addition, they were given the recommendation that there should be no exemptions within the downtown. Currently, the zoning code allows for certain exemptions within the downtown. Because it is in a whole buildout downtown, it's not easy to require parking for existing buildings. But the recommendation to the Planning and Zoning Commission was that for dispensaries, we are going to require the parking, whether or not it's an existing structure. And so the Planning and Zoning Commission considered that. And they chose to recommend an increase in number of minimum spaces from 10 to 20. So the first ordinance within your packet is the board's recommendation plus the 20-space minimum parking requirement. Are there any questions about the ordinance in your packet that is essentially the village board's recommendation plus the parking requirement? The alternative ordinance within your packet is the ordinance recommended by the Planning and Zoning Commission. The primary difference between these two ordinances is the creation of an overlay district. So for the manufacturing type uses, they'd be limited to the M1 and M2, but it would be within the proposed overlay district. The overlay district is in your packet. It is the same for the manufacturing uses as for the dispensaries. It generally consists of property east of Route 25, but not facing Route 25. That's an important point there, because I want to point out that the Walmart property, the owner of Walmart property would not be eligible. So anything fronting Route 25 is not included in the overlay district. So for the manufacturing type uses, they'd be limited to M1 and M2. For the dispensaries, they could also be located in the V3 within the overlay district. Same overlay district, same property. Again, both of these type of uses would be regulated by special use permit with the same conditions that would apply under the village board recommendations. Are there any questions on the ordinance then was drafted to have any zoning recommendation? There is a third ordinance in your packet that the board's considering tonight. This ordinance was drafted based on a prior discussion by the village board on December 9. These are proposed regulations regarding the business that did not go to the zoning board, because these regulations would not be included within the zoning code section of the village code. They would be part of the village code regulating the business. So the goal of this ordinance was to reiterate the state's requirements regarding cannabis uses, but also add additional business type regulations that the village board had agreed on. And some of these are as follows. That no cannabis odors shall be detectable outside of the premise, and ventilation plans shall be required at the time of application and shall be maintained. No products, cannabis, or paraphernalia being sold shall be visible by the general public or public space. A security plan that includes an interior and exterior surveillance system and the lining of all entrances and exits to the facility shall be required at the time of application and shall be maintained. Access to the police code enforcement and other appropriate village personnel shall be provided at all times for inspection to ensure compliance with state and village regulations. In addition, the board did decide that they would permit the consumption or use of cannabis within a dispensary. But the ordinance allows for it, but only when permitted by special use permit. Since all dispensaries would be going through the special use permit process, you would be able to allow that through the special use permit process. Furthermore, the hours of operation were expanded or were limited to mirror the hours of operation that the village code allows for the sale of alcohol, which is 8 to 10 p.m. Under the state statute, the sale of cannabis is allowed at 6 a.m. So further restricted that to 8 p.m. So that is a summary of the ordinance, which outlines the business regulations. The rest of the regulations within the ordinance regarding business regulations just effectuates what is required in the state act. It is a duplicate of what's in the state act. So that it is clear all of the regulations that the cannabis use will be subject to, and that if the state goes and amends their act at some point, that we still have those regulations on our ones. And that we can come back and decide if we want to make our regulations more lenient at that time. Are there any questions on the ordinance effectuating the business regulations? So those are the three ordinances tonight. You can, the board has an option to choose one ordinance or the other as far as the zoning, or come up with any combination that you would like to. And we should be able to pair something tonight if we can come up with a consensus and there's a clear understanding of how the ordinance should be amended.
Okay, so my suggestion is going to be that we vote on the ordinance for the planning and zoning. That's what I'm recommending.
Well, can we discuss them?
Sure, absolutely. And if for a reason that fails, we could vote on the other. But yes, absolutely, there's time to discuss.
I think the planning and zoning recommendation, I think what everybody has to really understand here is that the idea of it not fronting Route 25, not only prevents it from obviously Walmart, but also the whole down mixture of them, which are the two largest parking lots in the village. And if we're going to talk about the need for parking, closing down the two largest parking lots in the village seems to assure yourselves of the truth. So just on that, the fact that one could not create a situation, so there could be a recommendation.
I would be interested in thoughts. I'm in favor of rejecting the properties in the village.
I would say I don't. I would reject it in totality, but I would, I would not agree with that excluding the properties front of Route 25. That would be my only objection to planning and zoning's recommendations and recommended changes.
I also object to.
So that would be?
Around 25, yeah. Or fronting Route 25. And the biggest properties that are, have an opportunity for the business, but also have facilities that, as a person. There's not a condition.
Does anybody have any objections to it, with the exception of the properties on Route 25?
Yes, I like the overlay districts. I think we can accomplish the goals, address the goals of Emmanuel Luther and otherwise, would they be restriction for using overlay districts?
Any more discussion on the? Who made the motion?
I'm not.
Oh. Yeah, so I guess would I then be amending my motion? Well, I guess it's just too important, so.
You can either state what would be included in the ordinance that, you know, you're referring to in your motion, or you could withdraw your motion if you wanted to make a motion and your ordinance is referring to the board's recommendation, since you don't like the overlay districts, you could vote on the board's recommendation.
Okay, I prefer that. So I guess I'll withdraw my motion. What I'd like to do is make a motion that we adopt the board's recommendation with one minor revision, that revision being that we keep dispensaries and categories of that nature at least 1,500 feet away from churches. Is Emmanuel Luther in church at all at the current?
We can have one incorporated on the Baptist church.
2,500 feet restriction.
And any church, any church, even outside of.
Put it in.
Is that correct, attorney? We can protect it outside of the.
Yes, we could report it.
Or we, or we could choose only one, don't take it's then.
Yeah, yeah, we could.
You could choose.
We could choose to word it. Right now, in the 2,500 feet restriction, it's profit, would be the property lines for existing public or private school or elementary, secondary school, or daycare center, daycare home, group daycare home, or a bunch of daycare things, place of worship, or area zone for residential use, and it would be inside or outside.
Well, we could, we could make it 1,500 feet from a school, which would effectively give Emmanuel Luther what they're looking for, not limit ourselves, whether to be at a church.
And just to clarify, what I was reading from was the 2,500 feet restriction, which is only for manufacturing uses. And it specifically excludes dispensaries from that restriction in the ordinance, the board's ordinance, which is like.
1,500 is.
There is not one, just the 1,500.
So we would be adding a few more restrictions on the state or recommendation. Just they can't locate.
So just for clarification, 1,500 feet exclude the entire downtown?
You could also eliminate or consider eliminating the V1 and V2 zoning districts. And that would guarantee that you're not going to fall within the downtown or any of the zoning districts near the downtown. If you have a 1,500-foot buffer, if you take those zoning districts out, you know, you are essentially limiting it to, you know, River Valley Square. Sorry, the map is terrible. There is a mapping package.
So it sounds to me like you achieve the same goal by excluding V1 and V2 on the original proposal, or you could achieve the same result by using planning and zoning and just eliminating Project 25. Very good, same fact. If you look at the map.
The, what is that called, Route 68? What does that sound like?
The one, yeah, by the.
Oh, God.
I'm trying to call this up.
We had a little discussion, we have a discussion, and the question that we have to make at this point, that from a staff perspective, the overlay district, if you want to expand it, is easier as far as implementation, so that there's no, it's not subjective later on, like what is the 1500 feet, where does the star first end, is the common building on the property line? When you create the overlay district, there's no worry. Like in our historic district, we know exactly what properties are in and what properties are out. And so that is from a staff perspective, I'd rather see the overlay district, even if it's expanded, than, than the buffer.
I agree, and I also think, given the overlay district, if down the line, if you chose to expand it, we would be in a better position to do this.
Well, if you're interested in making a motion, planning and zoning recommendation would be.
So I will make a motion to approve. Scott, you'd have to withdraw your motion then.
I think Scott would.
Well, I'd be interested in what's matured and know your motion.
With whom we're also meeting. All right, so I'm going to make a motion to, to approve an ordinance amending various sections of Chapter 157 of the Village Code relative to adult use and medical cannabis business establishments to mirror those presented by the Planning and Zoning Commission, however, including businesses located, businesses that are fronting Route 25.
Can I have your motion?
Sure.
Would it be properties that are also west of Route 25, launching Route 25, like the River Valley Square?
Yes, oh, it would be businesses on Route 25 and.
Okay.
How fine tune can I get with this? I don't know how exactly I can get, because there's a lot here on this, on Route 72, considering on Route 25.
Keep in mind that this is always, we can always decide to include different property or change it. I think that the point in the main that we start out being more restrictive and that we can certainly modify this.
You can stay from the edge of the property, will have any, and you're dropped, but you could, if you want to use the property line, River Valley Square, you want to make sure that it's former dominant.
Yeah, so almost like, like, like the fence that is behind.
I guess where I'm a little unclear is like, would those trees on each also included? Do you want to, because we can certainly draw around. The two we would want is just the River Valley Square property, the west side of 25.
Yes, that's the only one that makes sense, I think, so we could include that.
I think it's worth discussing also, we're saying for mirroring, mirroring the recommendation that they increase the five markets up to 20.
Okay, so to clarify, if the, her motion would include properties east of Route 25, fronting Route 25, and the River Valley Square property up to, the property, I just remember Valley Square property, but that's it, as far as the west.
And, yes.
Everybody understand what that means, right?
I think I would. I guess I would be more in favor of 1825 east and west without limiting it to the old office.
We are. Well, based as to what Jeffrey said, it's just, just the fairly small.
But I think what I'm also going to, I think what we have to be aware of, Scott, is that there is a, an additional parking space requirement in the planning and zoning amendment that I am in favor of as well, which would obviously limit some of those smaller businesses on both east and west of 25, so.
But I don't think we need to then additionally limit it because it might limit anybody's limit, it's the west.
Yeah, I think, I, what I envisioned was that, that behind that property line is just a north-south line that extends, you know.
Keep in, keep in mind also, it has to be a commercial property, obviously, and they have to come before the board every single time for a special.
And to speak.
Out of our, out of our style, out of our state.
So you're saying, oh, it's.
Are we clear on the members' motion?
25, west and east.
So I will make a motion to.
Well, we can give a second.
Well, how about.
Just clarifying. So motion of the ordinance amending various sections of Chapter 157 of the Village Code relative to adult use and medical cannabis business establishments to include recommendations by the planning and zoning district amending the ordinance to show that Route 25 and fronting properties would be, does that make sense?
I'll second that. Do I have a motion in a second? Any further discussion on this?
Do we, does this now, look this, or are we still going to have another discussion afterwards on the business?
They're separate.
Okay, so discussion on this item?
Trustee Selleck?
Yes.
Trustee Wood? Yes. Trustee Mahoney?
Yes.
Trustee Andreessen?
Yes.
Trustee Cozey?
Yes.
All right, very good. Just for the record, none of you are required to stay here. Have you seen enough?
Thank you.
Thank you for all for going out, of course.
Yes, thank you all very much. Motion for the ordinance amending various sections of the Village Code relative to adult use and medical cannabis business establishments.
Well, somebody remind you that we're still having a meeting here, so if you take Okay. Do you have a motion in a second? Some discussion on item D. I'm going to guess that any business that goes into this. And is going to try to make one, one of the houses, or two, is going to realize that we're, but no, we're here with the case. However, I don't know if what we're restricted is under what's. Absolutely, we've done that for others. There are procedures in place for that, for developing now, where there is a payment to, or expense, et cetera, they can for, for. One more discussion on item people, can't take all this?
Trustee Selleck?
Yes.
Trustee Wood? Yes. Trustee Mahoney?
Yes.
Trustee Andreessen?
Yes.
Trustee Cozey?
Yes.
Very good. Last item on our, new business is a presentation, but I need counsel first to get a floor.
Thank you. My audience, what?
Don't be wrong.
I did, I did, I did hear you. For everybody in the audience, thank you, President Miller and board, for allowing me to speak. I am Dundee Township Supervisor, I'm Trish Lee. For those of you who live in any one of the nine villages, I am your supervisor. I'm here today to talk about a referendum that you will see on the bell at March 17th, or should you vote early, March 30th. And the referendum is about our 708 Mental Health Board. So I've been doing this little roadshow for, for a couple of weeks now, and here's the why, okay? Why a mental health board? Right now, or in 2019, one in five residents experience a mental illness. It could be anything from as simple as an anxiety attack to test preparation fears. One in six children have developed mental disabilities such as cerebral palsy, epilepsy, autism, or Down syndrome. When we start talking about teenagers, one in five teenagers, while they are in high school, have some sort of mental illness or greater. The 708 Board would consist of seven volunteer, and I want to repeat that, seven volunteer Dundee Township residents that are appointed by the Dundee Township Supervisor, currently me, that will advocate for fellow residents with mental health, intellectual, developmental disabilities, and substance abuse issues. The 708 Board ensures that the proper services are in the township to help the people of the township. So let's continue with some statistics. December 2019, I, I had 200 people waiting for services. Those are 200 people, 200 people that AID has identified to me, saying, Township, your responsibility, what are we going to do? I currently have 9,864 persons with a mental health diagnosis. I currently have 5,261, I have not checked carpenter's numbers for this month, so it could go up, that have been arrested for illicit drug use. Okay. I don't even know what the number is of people who haven't even come and said, either to AID or any of the, of Rosencrantz, Rens, or Amida, that they even need help. I don't know the number from D300 that tells me on the 22nd birthday of a person who has a developmental or intellectual disability, the bus stops coming. It doesn't come to their house anymore. So these children are, and the parents have to figure out where, where they go, what do they do? Unfortunately, we found out in Sleepy Hollow, what happens to a person who is released. He was, his parents locked him at home, he figured out how to get out of the house, and went to his next door neighbor and did some serious damage. Dundee Township needs the 708 Board. The 708 Board would help with advancing council, employment services for disability. Right now, if you go to Jewel or to Walmart, you're going to see people who are disabled. That's because the township and AID have been able to place them. I need to be able to place more people there. I need day training and treatment. I need substance abuse rehab. I need transportation, personal assistance and support. That's for the person who has a developmental disability and can't get around, but they want to get around. We should be able to provide a care giver for them. Family restless support. This one was a hard one for me to understand, and when it was explained to me, this light bulb went up. Parents are taking care of their children, or adult children are taking care of their parents, but they can't leave them alone. They can't go to dinner. They can't go to the movies, because they can't leave that person who has a disability alone, because they could harm themselves. And so that is what family restlessness is. So as I said, in this election cycle, you are going to see the following wording. It'll say, shell Dundee Township levy an annual tax of not to exceed 0.15 for the purpose of providing community mental health facilities and services, including facilities and services for persons with developmental disabilities or substance abuse. I did not write this. The State of Illinois and the General Assembly did. They probably did their best to try to make this as clear as mine. So that's why I'm doing this. Dundee Township has a medium assessed value of $60,000. So the levy of 1, 0.15 would cost you $90 a year. In my case, that means I have to be willing to give up 10 Starbucks in one year. Really, it'd be 10 Starbucks, probably a day, as your village administrator could attest to sometimes. So the money that is collected stays in the township. The services come to the township. Now, 1.5, we don't know what that number is, and I'm going to be honest with you. We don't have a clue what the budget is, because we could have a substance abuse provider come in and say they need 250,000. AID could come in and say they need 500,000, right there, that's $750,000. They could say, we have a major homeless population, we need to figure out housing for them, that's another 500,000. So until I put this board in place, which, if this passed on March 17th, on March 18th, I will start taking resumes for the seven-person board to help me advise what services we need, so that I could have the proper budgeted levy in place December 1st. Now, if you would just indulge me, I would like to bring up Jim Gould, who actually lives this issue.
Good evening, everybody. Uh, my name is Jim Gould, I've lived in Oton, Carpentersville for, uh, three years or so. Uh, I teach at Academy County College. My son David is 27, uh, my wife adopted him when he was an infant, and we later discovered that he had suffered some kind of a prebirth brain injury. Uh, David functions at about the level of four-year-old, he is completely non-verbal. Um, and can't look after himself, I can't, you know, he went home for an hour and say, new pizza, uh, for two minutes, and knew he didn't know how to do that. Uh, when David aged out of school, Electric was talking about five years ago, the question was what happens? And, uh, both my ex-wife and I work full-time jobs, so neither of us can stay home to look after him. And, uh, so for two years, we made send him to a program that provided care for him. It costs about $20,000 a year, and that's simply unsustainable, um, and we're reasonably well-resourced to be able to do that. But over the long term, that's simply impossible. Uh, three years ago, David was granted state funding, so he is now Medicare-funded, uh, Medicaid-funded for the rest of his life. Uh, but my family is the lucky family, uh, Electric said, there are 200 people waiting here in Dundee Township for the kinds of services that my son David now receives. And, uh, you know, a few minutes ago, we stood and pledged allegiance to our flag and, uh, which calls us to justice for all. And those who need mental health services, those who are struggling with addictions, uh, those like my son David with developmental disabilities, um, th- this is the responsibility of the community. The state has a long, long waiting list, and if you know anything about adult services and developmental disabilities in the state of Illinois, we're like 47th or 48th out of 50 states, I'd get better services rather than Alabama for David. Uh, this Dave is not stepping it out, so it's up to local communities. So I'm asking you to help get the word out, those of you who serve churches, to get the word out. Uh, this is a matter of justice, uh, that God calls us to in the Holy Scriptures, um, and, uh, I'm asking for your support for this referendum. Thank you.
So, Board, should you get any questions about this, please send them towards my office, I can give more detailed information. People in the audience, I do have handouts, um, should you want to read it. It's hard to put everything on, on, you know, a sheet of paper, uh, but, you know, I just ask you, I, I, I can't ask you to vote one way or another, I just ask you to educate yourself, let your fellow neighbors, you have questions?
Yeah, just a quick question, do you know what the total amount of revenue that you may be able to gain if this tax increase is actually?
So if, if we went with the medium assessed value, and we went to the fullest extent that the law of the levy, the levy law allows us the 0.15, it would be approximately 2.7 million dollars.
A year?
Now, I don't, like I said, I don't know what it is, because we don't know what services, we don't know what contract.
You don't know where you'll divvy it up, but the total.
No, oh no, we'll never ask for 2.7 million. None, none of the, none of the townships, uh, in King County has ever asked for the full amount due to contracted services. So if, if, let's pick on Joe's detox. He comes in with a contract and he says, I'm gonna serve you, and it's gonna be $250,000, it's $250,000 per day. AID, which is the only provider for individuals with disabilities, um, they would come in with whatever their number is. They cannot change that number for, you know, for the term of the contract. Assumption is the contracts would be between one and two years, the first time out of the gate.
But you said a pool or a bucket of 2.7 or?
Correct, in theory.
Right, correct.
Question, is this, uh, first of all, it's a kind of a program, you just be more, it's not as trusting, just be as me. But as somebody who took care of, of, uh, a senior parent, now, I, I understand that, I don't think this program deals with like, senior care or elder care.
So, I don't need to interrupt.
No, no, please do.
So, yes, it does. So, the federal government states that a person over the age of 65 is an individual with a disability. It is a, it, now, we don't say what kind of disability, but yes, Scott, as your aging parents, uh, you know, transportation, uh, should they need, should you need restless care, should they need, uh, it, it doesn't, it would not overtake Medicare, but let's say that they only.
Steps into senior services maybe a little bit?
Right, a little bit of senior service, well, let's say they only get to, and unfortunately, I, I, I don't deal with Medicare that much, but let's say they need, um, a speech therapist to come to the house, and, or a physical therapist to come to the house, and Medicare says you can only have that once a week, and the doctor says, they just have liver placement, they should have it three times a week. This program could work for them.
Awesome, wonderful, thank you.
So one of the other things is, as I said, as this bill and, and, you know, I can't tell you how to vote, but marching teeth, if it passes, I would be asking for applications. My applications that I want to see on my board, I want to see public officials, community leaders, I want to see doctors, teachers. I want to see parents, you know, I would love to get hit with 50 resumes that I have to go through a little down set. Trustee Wood, you have another question?
I did, um, so if this gets approved and the funding is made available to you, how or what are your plans to communicate these new services to the community effectively so that the money is used efficiently?
So, it, it does give us allowance for publication, um, what, what will happen, um, and what's happened in southern King County? So I'm using St. Charles as my kind of, I'm stealing from them, because it's a lot easier to steal a wheel than it is to reinvent. Um, so what they, what they did is, as soon as their, their similar board passed, they got the board in place, that would be announced. They would then start going through what services, so they would be talking to fire, uh, fire police officials, uh, presidents, you know, administrators, the board, what are you seeing in your area, what's, you know, we know what the problems are, okay? Uh, then we would start contracting the services. As soon as the services are contracted, then yours will, I, I mean, within reason, because really, we don't get the tax money till June of 2021. But that's when it would start.
And the communication to the community would be via, would it be through flyers, through social media?
All of it, as much, as much publication as I can get out. Um, your village is great with working with us, we send out our flyers, we get on the board, um, you know, the shrine board, I, uh.
DQ.
DQ, thank you, um, you know, so, yeah, you, you, every, every village, uh, the four, in total villages are great with getting out our, our information.
I would just take to see the, the information now.
Oh, that, no, that would be, yeah, no, it's not, not gonna get out. D-300 is actually waiting, because they're gonna be our biggest, I mean, there's obviously people already aged out at 22. D-300 is going to be that.
Okay.
Very good.
Any other questions?
Just one suggestion for the thousands of people that watch us every night on TV, you just let them know where they can go for further information.
They can call, uh, they can call my office, uh, my office is a 47-428-8092, extension one, or they can go to our website, which is dundietownship.org. Under the supervisor, you will see all the information and the flyer to which, uh, you can presen- you can receive.
Thank you, Jeff.
Thank you very much.
Financial reports, that is, uh, we're working, we're on the table, Trustee Sella?
No report.
No report, awesome. What administrator? Attorney?
No report.
And there, Chief?
I'd just like to say one thing later, it was about 10 days ago, that maybe Mike Governor Ali, uh, advised us, he's gonna be retiring after 29 years in May, not this year. Yes, went on vacation, decided, he's building a house now.
One more, sir? Okay, we don't have any more finance here, so take public comment on anything. Do you want to talk to them on anything else?
Tim Bishop's my name, and I heard the zoning board talking about possibly putting in a camera dispensary in the old Dominique's Shopping Center, but I would love if you're aware that there is a preschool or a daycare that's in there, I mean, I think everybody's talking about it, so.
The building is leased anyway. The Walmart is leased.
Uh, I talked about it in the Dominique's, in the Dominique's area, just kind of towards the north end, there's a daycare there.
Safari daycare. Not called Safari.
I believe the name, the name, but I see it, I buy it, so you may want, not only have there one, especially here, a daycare is the one, too.
Understood.
I think the partner needs the better, so. Alright, thanks.
Good, thank you. Anybody else? Okay, uh, we have no second question, unfortunately, I'm gonna have to ask a motion on Dr.
All of them?